Welcome back to Hardin County Commissioners Court. It is one thirty PM on September the twenty first. We are back for a special meeting and at this time the meeting will come to order. All members are present. Mr. Kirkendall, will you please lead the invocation?
Yes, sir. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Lord, we pray for Hardin County, all of our employees, our spouses, our families, God. We pray for health to be in our families. Father, we pray for wisdom, Lord, as we set the budget and the tax rate and all that, God, and, and, Lord, as we discuss it today in our hearing and as, Lord, we get ready to move forward. We thank you for our military and our, in this great country we live in, and, Lord, we pray for your grace to continue to be upon America in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Kirkendall.
Yes, sir.
Item number four, Misty Whitney Purchasing Agent, results of bid opening and awarding of bid for two-inch asphalt overlay of the following roads, Commercial Drive, Pinewood Boulevard, Piney Point, Woodcrest, Country Wood Circle East, Country Wood Circle North, Blanchard Drive, and Bagleyka North for a total overlay of one point five miles. Good afternoon.
Bids were opened in the purchasing department front office on September eighteenth, two thousand fifteen, at two PM. Trudy Unruh and myself were present. The bids are as follows. CMM Construction was one seventy a square yard and LD Construction was one seventy-four a square yard.
That's one seventy?
One seventy and one seventy-four is.
Okay. I move award the bid to CM, low bidder, one seventy.
Second.
Have a motion by Commissioner Pelt and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number five, discussion and possible action regarding revision of the next payroll date from October first, two thousand fifteen to September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen, and amend the fiscal year two thousand fifteen budget to fund the additional payroll. I believe most everyone in here is aware that about two weeks ago, while working on some budgetary items for the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget, Debbie McWilliams learned or realized that we'll have twenty-seven pay periods in the next fiscal year. There's been a whole lot of discussion about this because it's something that we need to resolve before we pass the budget next week. A lot of back and forth about what would happen to, to correct the issue. I think we finally, finally settled on Friday that we would pay for these last two weeks of September, in September, in this budget year. However, I, I think that, I'm not sure who wants to address it. I'll, I'll begin to address it, but I'm not sure that that's what we want to do, although the line item says that's what we're gonna take action on. I believe what we're probably looking to do is that we will leave the payroll date on October first and we'll have twenty-seven pay periods during the fiscal year two thousand sixteen. And what we talked about is that all of the elected officials would just take their annual salary and divide by twenty-seven, leaving all of the other hourly employees, which does include the exempt employees, they are hourly. That their, their payroll would, they would get twenty-seven paychecks at their hourly rate for every time sheet that they turn in. Did I state that incorrectly?
You did. No, not incorrectly, you stated correctly.
Okay.
The exempt are hourly and they would get it twenty-seven.
Yes.
I have done a lot of research into this the last week and the people who furnish time sheets, and that's everyone except commissioners.
Well, elected officials.
I mean, except elected officials.
Yes, sir.
They're not just commissioners. They, their payroll is calculated off a time sheet. Elected officials are not. And if we would go back to October the first, as was, you know, as would fall normally, then this would allow all the people who file time sheets to get a check for a distinct time period, and there are twenty-seven time periods because the last period in September is a time period for this first check in October. And then if we don't do that, then in order to handle the elected officials, which their time period goes from first day of the month to last day of the month, no matter how many days are in it, then you're gonna have to go to a, back to a semi-monthly payroll or something, and that would be changed in the system again after we've already changed it here some years ago. So the simplest thing would be stick with the October first time period, divide the elected officials by twenty-seven, that will give them the exact, their exact monthly pay in the months. And at the end of the year, their salary, which is published.
I have that to pass out there.
Yeah. Their salary, which is a set salary, would be exactly what the budget shows and what the public's been told.
And you'll notice at the bottom that this, this notice was published in the SLSBB on September sixteenth, two thousand fifteen, as required by statute.
Judge, I would put that in the form of motion that we amend this from September thirtieth back to October first, which is the payroll that it would, that it should occur on for that, that pay period.
Well, I think that we just let it die for lack of a motion because that's already the, that is already the, uh, date of payroll.
But we don't need to get something in here to put in the.
I think what we need to do is in the, in the, uh, in the budget hearing that we'll have next Monday, we'll need to talk about amending the fiscal year sixteen budget to accommodate the twenty-seven payroll.
Okay.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Do we need to go into detail how much that's gonna be or we need to wait till then?
We could go ahead and talk about it now, but, uh, I think that Debbie prepared some information for us. Did you pass that out already?
Yeah, I put it, uh, they put it in their, um, packets. I just kind of pulled for the last payroll. On the seventeenth, it looks like. I, uh, took the gross wages, a recap sheet on the first, the second page is the actual run from the payroll. Took the gross wages, subtracted out cell phone allowance and travel allowance that we paid on this last payroll, which gave your adjusted total wages of the, that. I broke it down to how much is paid out of county funds, how much are grant funds, right here. And then put the county matches back in, so it was four hundred and eighty-seven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars on the last payroll. Because with, you know, a normal payroll, we wouldn't have the travel and the cell phone allowance.
So we would have to amend next year's budget by four hundred and eighty-seven, eight hundred and seventy-eight, seventy-four to cover payroll.
Well, the county funds, the amount of county funds for the gross wages would be three hundred and twenty-one thousand, one hundred dollars and forty-four cents. Their, uh, the grant funds or supplemental funds covered seventy-nine thousand dollars of, of that payroll.
Well, those two don't add up to four eighty-seven, though.
Those add up to the four hundred, two oh three.
Okay.
Okay, because I took out the cell phone allowance and took out the travel.
Well, we would still have to amend the mo, the budget to cover the full amount and we would just know that we would, we would be reimbursed on the state grants.
Now, the grants, some of your grants, it depends on when their fiscal year. Some of the grants start September first and end August thirty-first, and in this coming year, that's only a twenty-six payrolls. Their issue's gonna come up in the following year.
In the fiscal year seventeen budget?
That's when they'll have the twenty-seven if their fiscal year is September first to August thirty-first.
Now, this four eighty-seven also includes all of the elected officials' pays?
Yes.
And so the very last page in here, the forty-nine oh thirty-six, would come out of that because we would not be receiving that additional paycheck. We're gonna divide ours over twenty-seven.
That's how much it would leave on elected officials.
Okay, but that, Angela, y'all will have gotten together and had the exact figures Monday? For taking the elected officials out and stuff?
Yes, taking elected officials out, but it's very hard to get an exact figure until we know the hours that the, the employees work. If there's any overtime that has been done.
Yeah, but we're just doing.
I think what we can do is a worse, or base scenario, and then if there's overtime, it would have to.
Well, you're looking at, uh, you're basically are talking about the two-week timeframe. So you're taking basically eighty hours as the hourly rate is supposed to be the normal amount of being elected officials cases. Uh, one of their pay periods is all you're gonna be subtracting out of that pay.
Yeah, but I'm saying it's, it's gonna have to come out of what she's got here. We're not gonna need to put this full four hundred and something thousand dollars, it's gonna be less than that.
Well, basically, how much did, did, uh, the elected officials get paid in their last pay period?
Yeah, that's what.
Not getting allowances, is that how much you back down?
That's what they did.
Yeah, but, but we need to adjust it to that so that Monday, when we have the public hearing, we will have the correct figure. And it'll be less than this amount here.
And, and you also would take out the grant supplemental funds too, right, to get to that point? So it would be quite, quite less than that.
Can we have those Friday? So that we can look at them over the weekend?
Just continue to do the last pay period. I mean, you know, because all pay periods fluctuate. You, you've got a lot of part-time people and all that, when you just round it.
Are you asking, I think what we're doing or what we're deciding is this item is gonna die for lack of a motion, so payroll will still happen October first.
Okay.
And did you withdraw the motion?
Yeah, I withdrew.
And it'll be at the new rate, whatever y'all decide that to be, correct?
Yes, ma'am, and, and I'd like to, when we go to the next item, the budget workshop, I'd like to discuss that as well regarding the two percent increase, but are we finished with number five or are we still on it? Go ahead.
I, I just have one question and I don't have a problem with what Mr. Pelt has recommended. The only problem that I do have is the two-week period of time that we're in right now. Where, as it looks, we're gonna give a two percent raise for this two-week period of time, and I have a problem with that because we're in another budget.
Well, that, that's how it's been done every, every time, but I understand what you're saying.
Well, I will vote against it because of that then.
Well, you have to keep in mind, they established as a policy back when they switched over to the two-week period, that any wages that are paid are gonna be paid at the rate established at the time the paycheck was actually issued.
I understand that, and it's gonna be on October the first.
And so it's under the new budget year right.
Right, but the work that was done was in the current budget we're in right now, correct?
The work was done, but again, you're on a budgetary accounting system. You're not on a cruel accounting system. So whatever is established as your budgetary accounting procedures is what you go by. You don't.
Here's, here's how I understood it best. January the first, the payroll taxes are, that's usually when any changes are made to your income tax. Although you work those hours in December, you're taxed on them. If your payroll check is dated January the third and you pay payroll taxes on that even though you worked in December. That's just the only way there is to, there has to be a cutoff somewhere, and that's how I finally kind of caught on to the fact.
Well, because of the flack that we took from the employees to do everything just right, no messing their money, I'm voting against it, so.
Okay.
Well, going back, going back.
I can't see them working two weeks per.
But going back on that note, they, uh, she's already figured in the two percent for the two weeks in the next budget. And that's already all, all figured in, so it's not gonna be any difference in the pay. You know, that's, and, and like he's saying, that's po, that was apparently a policy.
Well, this, this.
We could, we could, I, then we could go back to the other one, you know, for lack of a motion, and change the payday to the thirtieth and take the two percent.
I think, I think what Mr. Pelt has proposed is the best way to do it, and I agree with that. But the fact that we're working two weeks, and I understand we're getting paid October first, but we're working two weeks in another budget with a raise that's going into another budget, so, and I'm guessing.
It's not going to the prior budget, it's going into the current year.
We're right now working on October the first payroll, correct?
That's correct.
And we're, we're in another budget right now.
No, you're not, you're still in the old budget.
That's what I'm talking about, without a two percent raise.
But that is not, October one starts dealing with the new budget.
This money will be, will be, will go against the twenty sixteen budget.
But here, here Debbie's, somebody who figures this, then, am I understanding it correct? The pay period that they're working in right now, even though that payday will be on October the first, that pay period will not have the two percent raise, but two percent raise does not go into effect till October first.
Whenever they get their check on October first, it's issued, it's supposed to, by policy, be issued at the new rate, but it's in the new budget.
I've only been on the court five years, but that's been the SOP since I've been on.
Yeah, okay.
That's the way we mark pay period in the new year.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And then.
Would I be correct in saying that you, you work fifty-two weeks at a certain rate of pay and it's always fifty-two weeks at that rate of pay? If you get a two percent raise, you got it for fifty-two weeks? It just happens that when the payroll falls in the new budget year, you get it, it's still fifty-two weeks at that rate?
We've always gone by the date you paid. If we paid in that new budget year, we use the new budget salaries.
Does the wage and hour law require that we do that?
I think it's the way the county.
Or is it Commissioners Court?
That's the way the county decided, even if I'm not mistaken, voted on.
What you said's correct. They're still gonna do the same thing.
Right, they'll still be working fifty-two weeks at that rate. The next time there's a raise, it'll, it'll be fifty-two weeks. Just two of those weeks or a portion of that period may be in a different budget year.
Yeah, my first two, I'm sorry.
We'll have Ms. Toin.
They'll receive twenty-six paychecks at that rate, which will equal to what's in the budget.
Right.
Yes.
And then if we leave this.
And then it'll change.
If we leave this week into the next budget year, it'll be twenty-seven weeks at this rate.
This year is just that flip year.
Yes, ma'am.
And I wanted to.
Hang on just a minute.
I just really have a statement to leave, and two of my employees, I have to say, paid out of the PHP grant, which this year, the initial start date was back to July one.
Right.
So I've talked with Debbie, uh, and Laura and Angela about it. Would that be considered their two percent raise back in July?
No, ma'am, that won't go into effect till October first.
That's what we had agreed upon.
Right.
When you mentioned that, I thought, well, because we've always done that in the past, just waiting for the initial raises to start when the grant year started.
Right.
Because then everybody would have different pay periods.
Absolutely, yeah.
If it started October first, then that's when we'd start paying it instead of September the eighteenth. Because right now, we're working, we've already budgeted all the money we're gonna pay in this budget, correct?
Yes.
All right, so starting the eighteenth, we're working on next year's budget at two percent raise if we grant that. That's, that's my point.
That is the policy.
Right.
When the, when this budget was adopted, it was adopted for twenty-six pay periods, and we just got our twenty-six paycheck last Thursday, so it's over with.
Okay.
Right.
And what I was going to reference to, Commissioner Cooper, is that you're talking about the two weeks being paid on October one, where you still have three more days in September that are going to be paid in the new budget year also. So you're, if you use the logic of the two weeks, you're gonna have to use the logic of the three days as well. You create a little nightmare.
Right. Right.
And so basically.
So because we're loo, using logic, we're fixing to be out four hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Yeah.
No, you'd be out one pay period on two percent pay raise. Those are our people, they're entitled to their money.
Exactly, and I agree with it, and I don't want to mess with their money.
And you're not. Paying them on September thirtieth at the old rate of paying them on October one at the new rate, how does that change their pay other than the raise?
About ten thousand dollars for the raise, yeah.
By ten thousand for everybody, which is miniscule in reference to each individual pay.
Well, a part of that is office holders, which fall under a different deal, so.
It's gonna be less than ten.
Probably six thousand dollars or something, seven.
We can move on to it.
Thank you, sir.
Does anybody have anything else, uh, referenced to that line item number five? All right, and, uh, number five dies due to lack of a motion. We have an item that was tabled this morning, Budget Workshop, to discuss the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget.
Do we need to adjourn and then go back into the other?
No, we need to pull that up.
Yeah, so that, that would be a, a line item number six on this agenda, Budget Workshop, to discuss the fiscal year two thousand sixteen budget.
And we tabled that this morning, and Judge, I move, recall it and discuss it.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to recall item number six from this morning's agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We can now discuss the, uh, line item number six from this morning Budget Workshop.
A sheet of paper that I just recently handed, um, the only change to it, I read it this morning, the only change is the first line item. Um, the amount needed to balance the general fund budget. Laura did some research in the twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two, twenty thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars um, for the Health Department plus the thirty-eight sixty-three was included in that department, um, the new department that was created. So we do not have to have that amount in the Commissioners Court budget line item. So twenty-four thousand and eighty-five dollars of that, um, is, the expenditures will be reduced in Commissioners Court line item, um, department budget. And so we need one hundred and fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars to balance the general fund. And of course, you know, these, these amounts will change now that, that extra payroll will be added to this budget.
But this does take into account the two percent raise that we, uh, discussed on August the twenty-fourth.
That is correct, and the, and the benefits, the fringe benefits.
Okay.
This takes into consideration the two percent?
Yes, sir.
And so what is it, what does it come up to if you take it out?
Um, I think the last time that I submitted something to the court.
If it were to be taken out, I think the amount was two hundred and fifteen thousand. That's what it cost.
Yes, sir, two hundred and fourteen thousand, eight sixty-five.
So then that, that would need three hundred and seventy-two thousand? No, because this has got it figured in, right?
This has it figured in, yes, sir.
Okay, so then.
You'd actually subtract the two fifteen from one fifty-seven and get you into the positive?
Angela, does what, what you've done change the three, seven, forty-one, five, fifteen down at the bottom?
No, sir. Um, well, let me, let me restate that real quick. Yes, sir, and I did not update that. You would take and add twenty-four thousand, eighty-five back to it because the amount you need to reduce your budget now is, um, four hundred and nine thousand, six seventy-six and not the four thirty-three, seven sixty-one.
So it'd be three point seven six six?
Okay, you got the three, seven, forty-one, five, one, five. That's what we had this morning.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Right.
And you add to that how much?
Twenty-four thousand, eighty-five dollars. That's the.
Four thousand, eighty-five. Six, five, six. Okay, so that gives an estimated starting balance
Mm-hmm.
for the two thousand fifteen, sixteen at three million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, based on what we've talked about here with the, uh, payrolls and the figure that, uh, that we have here, where's that sheet? Something like three twenty-one, and then you take off whatever the, uh, elected official's correction is going to be.
Which would be forty-nine thousand.
Let's say fifty thousand. So that's gonna bring up that we're gonna need, we would need to subtract from this three, seven, sixty-five, six hundred, something like two hundred and seventy-five thousand, let's just say three hundred thousand per error.
Yes, sir. That's correct.
So that'd be three hundred thousand. So now we're talking about a beginning balance at the beginning of this year of roughly three million, four hundred and sixty-five thousand, six hundred dollars.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay.
Which is over two hundred thousand more than what we started with?
More than what we thought we were.
Where we started.
That's correct.
Yes, sir.
So two hundred thousand more to the good.
Now, that three twenty-one on that salary, you've gotta consider the matches too. That three twenty-one's just your gross wages. You'll have your retirement, your FICA that have the match to bring it up.
Okay, how much do you have to make that fee, Davey?
Uh.
She's got it going down there.
Hundred thousand?
No, not that much.
No, not. Maybe about fifty to sixty.
Okay, let's. Well, let's just eliminate sixty-five thousand, six hundred and say we're beginning with three million, four hundred thousand dollars. Is that a fair figure?
Is that the ending, Thomas, or is it the end?
Be the ending of fourteen, fifteen and the beginning of fifteen, sixteen.
I'm lost, but I have a different, totally different number in my head.
What number do you have in your head?
Well, I mean, it's, I may have missed some of the calculation, but we originally had about, uh, four million, fifty-one thousand, and then we all decided we weren't going to, uh, move the seventy-eight or seventy-nine thousand to jury fund. I, I, I'm looking at it up to four million dollar.
Well, that's, that's about right, four million, and then we take two hundred and fifteen thousand for a two percent raise and we take.
But that's for the new year. That doesn't mean the beginning of twenty sixteen, sixteen. That's the ending of twenty fifteen, sixteen. That's what I was trying to get clear.
I think that's the ending of fourteen, fifteen, is that right?
Yeah, I think that's the ending of fourteen, fifteen.
We have four million, one hundred and seventy-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-six dollars and seventy-five cents from the ending of the fourteen, fifteen fund balance for the general fund. And I think that's within the sixty-eight thousand dollars that you.
What's that now?
The sixty-eight thousand dollars that was in the jury fund, I think that's the difference between.
Well, I mean, you're, you're starting the twenty fifteen, sixteen with four million.
Yeah, so you're.
Yeah, I just, I think, because I.
Yeah, we're, we're starting with four million and we're taking, say, a couple hundred thousand for two percent raise and four hundred thousand for this twenty-seventh payroll in this leap year, and that's six hundred thousand. And I've got it down to about three million, four hundred thousand, so I mean, you know.
For the ending?
Yeah, for the ending.
That's what I'm, I keep hearing you say, in, uh, beginning, but it's the end.
Yes, I see, I see, yeah, I correct, okay, that's correct.
Before, a few minutes ago, we were talking about moving that payroll into this year, so it does show it to be the, the, uh, beginning of next year, but now that we'll make that budget amendment in the next budget, it is actually after. That'd be after the fact.
So that's three point four after you add the salaries, everything.
That's right.
Everything.
It's after the two percent increase and after the, uh, twenty-seventh payroll of two thousand sixteen.
And depending on what's left on, like we were talking about earlier, the, the salaries, like, uh, in my group, I'm gonna have enough money in my salary line items to cover my people for the next, for these two weeks.
Well, that's out the window now.
Yeah, it's out the window, but it was there. So there's gonna be money left over. So it'll, it'll.
When we do the audit, well, that money would just flow into the next year.
Yeah.
All right. Are there any other questions on this information that's presented?
No, but, um, I, I would like to take off the table my support for a two percent raise with the new budget. With the budget time coming up, there, I have a lot of uncertainty about what we're actually looking at, and I'd like to leave it at that. And because I'm uncertain, I'm uncertain spending future money. So I'm not gonna support a two percent raise on this budget based off of the current information that I have because the, the numbers have changed too many times, and I can't support that because what's to say in six months, they don't change again. And so I take my support off for a two percent raise. If the court chooses to pass a two percent raise, then do not give me a two percent raise on Commissioner Precinct Two.
I support two percent raise.
I support a two percent raise.
I support a two percent raise.
Okay, I do not want one. The judge, the judge hasn't taken one, and I don't want to take a two percent raise either.
Now, we have published in the paper that you will receive one, so we'll have to amend that publication.
That's fine. I don't, I don't, I don't have an issue with that, but I, I don't want to take the raise because I'm, I'm just gonna be honest with you, I'm uncertain. And until I can get some, some questions answered, to sit in the forum to do that, uh, and I know that where we're at, then I can't support that. I, I support the employees. And I know that there's members of this court that have tactfully pitted the employees against the Commissioners, and, and I hate that. But I do support the employees. But at this time, it's like we're playing with a fifty-two card deck, we're playing with a fifty-card deck. And I just need to know that all the cards are on the table. Today, I am not a hundred percent certain. So I can't support a two percent raise.
Chris, let me ask you this, what would it take? Do you need to get with Angela or what?
Well, I can't give you that today, Mr. Pelt.
Okay.
So I'm just trying to be tactful.
I spent last week, you know, with our outside auditor and, you know, I, and I know these figures have moved around.
I have no confidence in our outside auditor. I don't.
Commissioner Cooper, you have anything further regarding the Budget Workshop?
Hmm, no, sir.
Anything else from Commissioner Kirkendall, Commissioner Pelt, Commissioner Roberts? I move, we adjourn?
Second.
We stand adjourned?